Oh.
Hi. All right, it is seven oh one, we call the meeting of the board of selectmen's order. First item of business will be the pledge of allegiance, selectmen or go, please.
Athletic relates to the blood of the United States of America. To the repower which stands for a nation. Indis治all which is very.
Okay, I have a couple of added agenda items. One is a communication from the tax collector and the assessor pertaining to the waiving of fees. That would be under six. And then a clarity, just for the record, to be clear, under agenda item nine A review draft ordinance that pertains to the police commission. I have those motions, please.
We'll move to add, I'm trying to, excuse me, tax collector and assessor communication under number six. And for clarification, nine A review draft ordinance is in regards to these ones are police commission.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor?
I, I.
Opposed? Yeah, well, it's because he's not out of lack.
I should just do it like.
Okay, so next item, all members of the board here, we have no minutes to approve public participation. This is one of two opportunities for the public to approve the board. I'm first gonna ask if there's anybody in the room who would like to address the board, and then I'll turn to anybody who's online. Please identify yourself by your name and your address. And then state your business. So is there anybody here in the room who would like to address the board of selectmen? Yes, sir, name and address.
Paul Anderson, eighty nine Main Street, Broadway. And then we get a little difficult in getting the agenda out. But the longer the agenda, the more time the public needs to be able to digest what's in it. I don't know how we manage that, because I know you're up against the wire of getting stuff in. It's just an observation.
Thank you, sir. There anybody online who would like to address the members of the board of selectmen? Please state your name and your business. Name, address, and business. Anyone online? Seeing none, there will be another opportunity later in the meeting to do the same. So we'll move on to communication. So justice was in your packet two weeks ago, there is communication from the tax collector and the assessor noting the waiving of interest due to notice issues on behalf of the town's tax bills for four addresses. Elliot, one copy, I'll share if anybody wants to, but this should pretty much round that out. So again, that was a result of a software conversion that didn't go quite as badly as Yemen T Bank one, but not far off. It's paid.
Yeah, we'll do it.
All right, we're gonna, we have no resignations. We do have a couple of re- couple of reappointments. Can I have a motion?
We'll move to reappoint Jim Thurs to the Planning and Zoning Commission as a regular member for a term expiring October first, twenty twenty six.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? I'll just thank Commissioner Thurs for his continued service. I think he brings a good perspective to that board, and he's been on there quite a long time. So back to having him continue to serve. All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Number two, Ted Smith.
We'll move to reappoint Ken Simansky to the Parks and Recreation Commission as a regular member for a term expiring October first, twenty twenty seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Again, I'll thank Mr. Simansky for his service. He has been serving our next mission also for quite a long time, certainly is an advocate for Parks and Recreation. All in favor?
I.
Opposed?
I.
So carry.
I was on.
Were you a yes or a no? Our next item of business is under unfinished business. I'd like to start off by thanking Ruth Calabrese and our new building official, Ken Rich, who have taken the comments that were submitted to them by this board, worked with the town attorney and tried to rework them into the draft. Ruth has been working on this for quite a while and making good progress, but this is, I think, the board's first opportunity to meet Ken Rich. He is our new building official. He is doing a fantastic job, has dove in with both hands, and he's putting his eyeballs on this. So if you guys want to come up. Charity, bring any comments you'd like to share.
You have a copy in your. I can go through these comments and when we get stuff that you have comments on. Starting on page one. I had starred under applicability. That's. Agricultural uses are not. Covered. And that's an issue that Ken has pointed out with regard to. In section two dash two of the tall grass. Part of the definition.
Right.
Ken has a. Informed perspective on. Having the issue of complaints about tall grass and what that the benefit.
Yeah, so then. One dash three. It. The code, the code shall not apply to. The properties described, and that's just basically. Anything with agricultural use. Tall grass. Or the bed, overgrown vegetation, vegetation doesn't apply to that. The dwelling that's attached to. We'll call it a farm and a property surrounding that dwelling. That, that's, that's what gets applied to. And it's mainly the front yards. And any trash that's around, but it doesn't have anything to do with the farms themselves. So. Within the tall grass. When we get called in for tall grass, tall grass and vegetation is central to the entire light maintenance code. These usually complain based, however, if pointed property maintenance officer can make their own findings. When a complaint comes in, tall grass or overgrown vegetation, the light officer is invited as to the property. And the tall grass may be one of the number of items. This can be anything from some broken down lawnmowers to a house that is in need of some major repairs. At times, it may be necessary calling for a wellness check. All types of property would be included. In this code, residential, commercial, and industrial. The only type of property that is not part of tall grass and overgrown vegetation. Is agricultural portions of commercial farming property. The owners of these blinded properties could be homeowners, business owners, and even bank. The mortgage company owned property may fall under this code. This is a tool for members of the local community that not only detect the value of the property, but it's also a great way of bringing, bringing out beautiful character. In each neighborhood of these.
So we talking about, we're talking about like I and J that we had talked about, we got rid of, and now it's back in.
That's where I'm. But it doesn't have anything to do with the farm.
Yeah, no, and I mean, that, what you're describing. Personally, that would work for me, because I have a commercial farm, but that's not my concern. My concern is with the, you know, people that have a house and, you know, maybe the lawn gets long, I don't know. Lawnmower is kind of not so great, breaks down often, and maybe they don't mow for two, three, four weeks. And then the guy next door is, you know, mowing his lawn with clippers and wants to see every lawn like that, and starts giving these people harassment by the power that's given to them with this. Light ones. That's what worries me about that, is that you have these, and yeah, you can say that, like, you know, the, the building official or the property maintenance person will be, you know, use common sense, not be, you know, pain. But if somebody has that to fall on, and they can make those complaints, they will. And, you know, so it's like.
They say Mike.
And so it takes up time, and it potentially is giving some person that, you know, has long grasp or whatever reason, I think an unnecessary hard time. So that's why I was against having this in here. And I also think that what it's written currently is basically saying we want everybody to mow the lawn every seven days. We want everybody to have this every seven day, mow your lawn kind of attitude, and I think that's an attitude that's changing, or should change.
Well, I don't, I did see that seven days in there, and I agree with you. Doesn't have to be in seven days. I just think it's more of a, a maintenance thing. You described it, I think, as a canary in the corn. Yeah, so it's, it's really more of a maintenance thing. It's not, has nothing to do with picking on anybody.
No, people will do that, though. I mean.
Well, for instance, I had. I worked in Southland, which has a fantastic lightwood, and they have fantastic people that are running. So I was the light officer there. And Pam is the one that went out, saw all these properties. When she would begin to complain. She would go out, and if she felt it necessary to write a letter to the people, she would. If not, she would just take pictures of what she saw. And then keep that at record. So if anybody else came back and said, well, you never did anything about it. Well, I did go out there. I did notice what was there, and here's my pictures.
Right, and then, and then we didn't do anything, but we did took pictures, and then again, it comes back to, well, why didn't you do it then? We think you should do something. It's in the light, or you should do that. That's, that's the part I want to avoid, because I don't think it's.
But what you're doing is, is you're, now you're neglecting an entire community over a few. And I don't think that's necessary. I think the seven day thing, we can take right out.
Well, yeah.
You know, you know, we'll leave it at a foot tall. Keep the seven days out.
See, I don't even like a foot tall.
Foot tall is pretty high.
Yeah, and so like, my wife and I have been talking about, you know, in our lawn, you know, maybe we're the only people in these windows that will ever do this, but you know, we're starting to look at, you know, there's certain sections of fairly large lawn that I'm mowing every week, and it just seems ridiculous. And as a beekeeper, it'd like to maybe, you know, put some other stuff in it. So we're looking at low mow and no mow lawn seeds and start moving sections of our lawn into that type of thing. So if somebody across the street didn't like that, then I couldn't do that, right? I could, I could run into trouble. Maybe you're reasonable. Maybe the person after you isn't reasonable.
But the. It's more based her front lawn where.
Yeah, my wife wants to do it in front lawn. Now, I don't want to. She does, and she always wins.
It's definitely very. Sure, I get it, but there's a give and take here, right? So. You know, we gotta think of the values of other people's properties and their respect of a people's properties. And not saying you're being disrespectful. You're doing your own thing. And, and, and I commend you for that. However, it's the, the tall grass. Basically, when we get a call for that. Oftentimes. There's more to it than that.
Yeah, I get that.
Okay, so that's why it's essential for this code. You know, we, so we could work on it together to write it and, and, and make it work. It might not completely work for what you want to do. But. You know, it's a give and take here.
Sure, and, you know, so where we ended up, I was happy where we ended up was they were gone, both these I and J, or. So, so since I see they're back in, where I was before we took them right out was, you know, I understand, you know, see, my concern is, you know, bank owned houses, mortgage owned houses where they just let them sit, and they look like crap, and, you know, nobody's trying to do anything or achieve anything. They're just neglecting it. So it'd be great to be able to make them mow that, so I get that. And then I thought about it a little bit more after seeing it back in, and after the research I've done into low mow and no mow kind of stuff. You know, I would be mowing maybe about every month or six weeks that area, depending on, you know, what was going on with it. So I could see that working where it's a longer period, and that still fixes the mortgage company that's just gonna leave and sit for until it, you know, it could be a year that, you know, that it, or it gets sold, or whatever's gonna happen to it. So where we left off before, I think I was in the one month to six weeks range and somewhere over a foot. So, I mean, that's a compromise to me.
I would leave it at a foot. Take the seven days out. I'm telling you, no one's going into your yard with a tape measure to measure in your grass.
No, no, I get that, and, and, but actually, when it comes down to it, that's exactly what's gonna happen. It's gonna be funny that day, too, because there's gonna be a picture of it. But, but. But at least it, it's very clear in, you know, from, not from your reading, not from my reading, but the person that's gonna complain, that they, you know, can see that there's, there's a, a limit here. It's one month or whether, so taking out seven days is that, like, it's like knocking down the fence. There's no good border. I don't, I like to have good solid, like, very good borders. So I think we need a time limit, because then you can say the clock has started. You know, your letter can say, clock has started, you know, it hasn't been mowed in a couple of weeks. You're gonna have to mow in the next couple of weeks, we want to let you know. Then you can work that out.
So we set a month. Okay, and then that gives you a couple of weeks, and that brings you up to your six week mark that you were talking about.
Yeah, effectively.
Okay, so we can do, we can do it that way.
Yeah, I'm happy with a month. I wouldn't be happy with anything less than that. I don't know if anybody else is. And the twelve inches, I, we can start there.
Most, 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 most people cut their grass. I'm one of them, because I like to do it. I need something to do all the time, and I enjoy that, right?
Twice a mowers even, you can come to my house and choose what you, how you want to.
But you don't want your grass cut, and you're yelling.
No, you can go once a month.
I, and I, I find a lot of people will keep up their lawn, and I'm sure you do, too. You just do it at a different schedule, right? So it's.
So currently, I mow my lawn every week, because that's the kind of grass I have, and it doesn't, to me, doesn't look good now, you know, and it's hard to mow and let it go. What I'm saying is, we're going to go a different direction, and then there's.
Entertain, entertain neighborhood?
Yeah, okay, yeah. And, you know, so parts of our lawn, next year will be switched over, you know, as a kind of experiment, to kind of learn how it is. So there's people like me that I'm sure, admittedly, small amount of people, but what I'm really mostly concerned with is people that, you know, I'm busy, I know how hard it is to, I don't want to have to mow the lawn every week, and my mower works all the time, and, you know, some other people are busy. They don't have as much resources. I want to make sure that, that they're not being unduly pressured for something as minuscule as mowing the lawn. That's, that's where I'm at.
I, I get it, and, and.
And there's, you know, and I don't have a problem if people want to, want to mow the lawn. It's fine. I'm not against.
But. Your property. No reason, it doesn't have your property. But we'll use the house on those, well, that I, well, we've been living there, but every time we go by, I used to bring. That grass never got mowed. The person that was in there didn't care about the property, didn't care about that, but the house over here, and the house here, immaculate. For them to have to deal with that, we get the week after week.
Yeah, and it's, I think it's a compromise, though. That person, that's their property. That's like property rights in the United States. They're like, that's when one of the, like, main things of a democracy is, I have my property. And I think it's, you know, kind of, you gotta, you gotta bow to that a little bit. There's rules, obviously, but.
Well, those people need to buy upon or buy out.
If they could, if they could, sure they would, right? So it's better if they have to mow it at least three times a summer. Than never.
You're right, it's better to have more three times a summer.
And then that gives you, to me, the bigger problem and bigger issue that we typically see is the house that's been abandoned, and we need the bank to clean it. You know, so to me, that's the biggest concern, and this is covered that way.
Okay, well, I mean, and, and also is, like, if you have a beautiful home here and a beautiful home here. Then the home in the center, it's just not taking care of anything. And you got the tall grass. And they have a broken down cars and whatever. The tall grass complaint gets me on some property, and then I can.
You have all the other stuff, too. I mean, the Bell's Road, you could take your bed. There's, you know, ten things there, just take a big. And if you also have something in there about mowing the grass, then that, that comes along for the ride.
Right, and that's what, it's kind of a gateway, and I hate to use that term.
That's my problem, and I want to protect people from the government, but, but too many gateways.
So it's like, here's the thing. You gotta start someplace. Right, and driving around town, it's a beautiful, beautiful town, but obviously, you have some issues like that. Yep, and this is the only way you're, you're gonna get to where I think you all want to be.
And I, I agree, I'm, I'm agree to a compromise on this, but like I said, it needs to be at least a month, and I'm not sure about what, I mean, we can move on for now. And I don't know what anybody else thinks.
Well, no one's gonna value a loan.
I'm gonna send you the picture of the first.
So, so in the interest of expectancy here, I'm gonna task you with homework, because what's gonna happen? Can you guys hook up us language that you would be comfortable with? That addresses his point, too, and then.
I think we're ninety percent there.
But I don't think we're. Without a problem, then with the additional two weeks where you want to get that in six weeks, right? And then we're just gonna leave the twelve inches in there, because that's not gonna matter. And, and that's gonna be, that's really not gonna matter.
Okay, yeah, I'll grant you that. I'm good with that.
Okay?
Yep.
And if it turns into a problem, we can talk. We're talking now.
No, we gotta do another ordinance that comes into a problem. That takes years.
Yeah, this is on like year eleven. Okay.
We're good for now. I'm gonna, we'll move on.
Yield the rest of my time. All right, we're getting closer. Before, I'm gonna just take the privilege here, and before we go through the rest of these, I do want to just raise something that I should have seen before on, in one, three, and that's the whole commercial farming operation. Ken, I had a brief sidebar about this earlier. I would rather that say, which is essential to a farming operation as defined by one dash one Q of the Connecticut General Statute, which is the definition, definition of farming and agriculture. Because I don't think the statute makes a distinction, unless I missed it, I might have missed it in definitions. I don't know. The, the commercial farming thing is amorphous. That, that doesn't really mean anything. If, if we're comporing it to the statutory definition of agriculture, that to me, now we're carving out parks. So that, that's.
What is the citation?
One dash one Q. It is the longest run on sentence you're ever gonna.
Yeah, and as I, I was gonna bring this up. I know, if I could just have back two minutes of my time, we may have to, just to comment. We are a right department town, so the above three acres, which mine is, you know, and many are, is a considered a commercial, and under that is the right to farm. So, you know, I don't know how that affects this, but maybe we take the commercial part out, because everybody, because of that ordinance, or not ordinance, but that regulation has a right to farm, and then therefore has a right to, you know, have a back or something, you know, that's gonna, you know, whatever, or, or a barn with stuff around. It's like, to them, it is a farming operation. I don't think we should give with one regulation and take away with the ordinance, you know?
So are you cool with one, there's one Q thing?
Yeah. Yeah. I yield back this.
Okay, so. I do, yeah, it's, that, that we're somewhat past that.
Yeah.
So Noreen said, cutting grass every seven days is proven to be a detriment to pollinator biodiversity, and frogs and toads, et cetera, be in butterflies anymore. Many of the flowering grasses such as pover, if given a long, longer cutting time, it should not be a tremendous eyesore, but healthy for the environment, so that's.
That's an excellent, excellent point. This year, there was a massive bloom of clover all up and down Rice Street and all the different towns in town, and it doesn't get above a foot. But like, I certainly, and a lot of people on, I noticed on Rice Street who buy honey from me, left that for, it was good almost a month, so.
I had a little crop grass that I couldn't do anything about, but.
Yeah. No, that's good for mowing, that's it.
Mowing tin cans. What else you got?
The next thing I had, a side note. The last meeting, but I didn't get it into the draft, I should point it out to you, it's on page six, and it's just after one month. I, that I, and vegetation of any type, between the opinion of the property maintenance officer, who's injurious to public health safety. I had a suggestion on the side, it's in one of the blue boxes, the third blue box down.
That's a good suggestion.
To put in, you know, the tree warden. Danger of the dentry and branches.
Because I'm on some right now, I'm one. Not, not to be that person, but with the growing of marijuana, was it become food, is it being considered vegetation?
Probably considered farming. No, I bet that's a commercial, and you can't grow, you can't grow marijuana outdoors, I don't think, I really will.
Not for a couple of years, but personally.
You can grow for personal use, but I thought you had to grow it. I don't think you can grow it. I don't know.
I just thought of it. It's indoors now, but.
Yeah. I can check back.
Just be the senior everyday garden as well.
Yeah. That's down garden.
Yeah, I'm getting. You need a plant that's grown. Pretty tall.
I don't think, you know, you're growing your front lawn and by the street right now anyways, so. Not on purpose, anyway.
I ask a question while we're on that page. This line here, number seven, a condition which is negatively impacting neighborhood property values, I just feel like that's so vague. I mean, it's not. I mean, I understand there are issues regarding that, but I just feel like that's open to interpret, interpretation what it is.
I mean, I understand there are issues regarding that, but I just feel like that's open to interpret, interpretation what it is.
And what would that be that's not already previously covered?
Yeah, and how do you, how do you determine that it's having an effect?
Yeah, that was my question is, how do you prove it?
Right. I mean, I don't like things that are open to interpretation that are not defined and not. Black and white. To me, that's just. I don't think that's necessary. Because it's just so vague.
Yeah, I, I put it in there and you can see the sequence of what happened. Took it out of six at the end.
Just below in seven. I feel like any of these items that are already listed could possibly already do that. So I just don't, I feel that that should be.
But someone already called saying my neighbor contacting like property value. I can't film the house.
You need, I would go out and find all the reasons. Right, that. Yeah.
I think strike seven. Anybody wanna fight for seven?
The next one's on, on page ten. There was a question and I'm, I'm gonna hand out very stuff language. Um, it's right at the top, number three. There was a comment from the town attorney that, um, this has to do with like. Going in.
But you're.
And, uh, Ken and I talked today and thought it would make sense to just keep it very simple. For any property which conditions. Constitutes an immediate threat to life, health or safety or is otherwise unfit for public competition. The property maintenance officer shall refer the matter to.
Most of the strict language covered, yeah, the window.
Yes.
But it's what happened. And we would want things in saying. Basically, exactly what happened today.
So in this instance though, what would have to be? Like the complaint in order for you to. Like someone can just claim, oh, I think their house is unfit for.
No, it would be the property maintenance officer brings in the. So this is past, that was past the, um, two, yes, two. So this is more procedurally.
After the fact, okay.
Right, so you're, you're assessing a property and believe this to be the case. And then it falls under the building officials jurisdiction.
Okay, so this is after you've already gotten the tall grass.
Yes, yeah, you're out of, you're out of the.
If you go, if you go onto a piece of property, the deck is literally falling off the house, um. Something's gotta be done. You know, and, and I understand. Some people just don't have the means to get it done. You know? You have to do something to make it safe.
And then what if? What if it's not inhabited? See, this is, you know, like one of those bank owned properties or something, someone just has abandoned and.
You can go after a mortgage company.
Well, also would that constitute an imminent threat to life, health or safety?
That's what I mean, like.
An uninhabited. Building code question. If there's a vacant house that's in disrepair, constitute. A threat to any of those things?
It's all in the light. You know? I mean, we can't go inside the house and fix it. But we can cite whatever we can see. Any violations that we do see.
You know, I can see where, you know, that neglected house that the deck was falling off or there's, you know, hole through the roofs of the floor was soft. It's in a neighborhood that kids could have access to it. You can say that that was a. I guess that's what I'm getting. Can you claim now because like, like even in the case of the fire department? If the fire department had to go in and it's unsafe, like, can you claim it's unsafe and unfit for, you know? Even though no one's living there, based on that assumption that maybe someone might go in there that's not supposed to. Or maybe the police or fire department has to go in there. And you make this claim based on that is, I guess what I'm getting.
Yeah, I mean. Basically. You can't leave a house. Just sitting there for thirty years. And let it rot. You know, and, um. And I think it's okay. You know, it's. So. Going back to. Um, mortgage company or bank owned property, um, I was involved with that for many years. And. When it does fall in then. And they do get complaints and they do take care of it, um, when they're pushed. And once they're pushed, they'll get somebody to go there every couple of weeks. And cut that lawn and check out the house and make sure everything is okay. But sometimes they do have to be pushed.
Good.
Well, we do know that there are powers within the code that allows you to. The, the amended language that you're showcasing is work. We know that.
Yeah.
So do you guys wanna keep the, the simple for over? Do you wanna keep the, the grand language?
No, I think it's important.
The only items that I have noted is. Otherwise I haven't calculated what each of you have suggested.
So upon review of the draft that was provided tonight, does anybody have any other issues or concerns with the language as far as construction?
Cause I wasn't here for a lifetime when you, the ordinance, but, and I don't see it in here. You removed the camper. The concern with the camper. That can't be in the front area.
That's zoning.
Oh, that was the zoning regulation. Okay, wrong.
And then one, it was, um. We changed the regulations so they could be inside yard and the rear yard.
You did change it.
Yeah.
Okay. I knew I saw it someplace and somebody called me today and said. I have it on the side of my house. We have a screen, my daughter on Berryland. They have no backyard other than.
Yeah, that's why we.
I mean, any other concerns or comments that people had along the way? Okay, so. Al, are you gonna hook up with that in the next couple of weeks?
Yeah.
There was some other hashtag I sent your way like a year and a half ago. All right, um, thank you guys. We're getting closer. I do appreciate your work on this. I know this has been a slog. Um, but, uh, you know, openly, I think we're gonna get some good places. I certainly appreciate your efforts.
Yeah, it is. Just one more question, just to, you know, from your experience in South Windsor, um. And it sounds like you guys actively used your, your Blight code, you know, um. Like if you were, do you just respond on complaints or if. A lot of people in the neighborhood or if you're in a neighborhood and on some other business and you go by, you're like, well, you know, that's against the Blight ordinance. Do you cite that person for that or are you waiting for a complaint?
Um, it was very rare where that happened, where we'd have to do that. Um, Pam did come back a couple of times, that, you know, I found this, took some pictures, she would show them to me when you think. You know, and most of that wasn't even grass, it was. Trashed, just everywhere.
Yeah, I mean, whatever, I would just.
And she, she would see and I would say, well, yeah, that's. It's not right. It's not fair to everyone else around, you know? Um, we can send them a letter and see what happens. But that was very rare.
So typically you wait for a complaint.
Uh, for the most part, you know, when I'm, I'm not driving around looking for it. I know there's probably areas in this town from properties and, you know. Us as a group, we could probably discuss that, you know, if there's ten point targets. That we should really concentrate on, um, types of property we should kind of trade on. We could do that, but it's just. For the most part. It's people complaining about. They, they want the value of their own property.
Mostly it's a complaint that's launched. And, and, yeah, I get that. Uh, so do you think that that, um, that latitude or discretion is, is. Is something that could be based on policy of the administration that like, you know, so like Jason says. Yeah, I don't want you going around there and getting people or I want you to get out there and, you know, is that like where it comes from or?
No, that's, there, there. There's really no influence from anybody except for residents. Alright, so the only ones that are gonna influence it are residents. Of course, yeah, of course. Yep.
Thanks.
No problem.
It seemed like a good segue just to bring up this note that. Um, the V E O report, there's about a dozen items that are slated for pending a Blight ordinance.
Are you saying hurry up?
It's that, that she's finding out from complaints coming in.
Right, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
But can't act on them without the tool. That's what I'm saying.
So I'm thinking that might be wells.
I did not.
You're gonna go, you're gonna have fields in the crossing between wells and rights, huh?
The one that was happening on, um. The section?
Scan. Scan.
No.
Oh, uh, Mahoney.
Mahoney.
Oh. Oh, yeah, that's definitely true.
Thank you.
Thanks guys.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, next up in our batting order, um, is the establishment of redevelopment authority, which is the first step in the immediate domain process pertaining to the. Taking of the casino property. Um, there is a draft that was submitted to you. Um, so we, we talked about this at our last meeting. A couple of people had concerns about specific charge and you read the, the review it is in here. Um, specifically it's in the first meraz and also in, uh, Roman numeral four. Um, there are two corrections that I wanna make, uh, both of them pertaining to the address of the property. It's about seventeen Bridge Street, it's 105 Prospect Hill Road, um, so that I've corrected my copy and, uh, pending approval here. Uh, I would amend that before this goes to town meeting. So that's also, that's also in the first meraz and in article four. And then I have a, a policy change that I, I wanna suggest, and that's in Roman numeral eight at the bottom of page two. That the agency shall coordinate its activities with, it's currently the Planning and Zoning Commission, E D C and other interested officials. I'd like that to say the Board of Selectmen, the Planning and Zoning Commission, the E D C and other interested officials. Those are the three changes that I, I have with this, but are there any others that folks have questions, concerns, comments?
I do.
Go ahead.
Um, just for transparency purposes, these individuals that are listed here, they are not approved when we pass this, correct? They fill out an application and apply to us or no? I've just had residents reach out to me asking, you know, how did these people get selected? So, um. Are we passing this with them on as automatic members? Is that separate?
Um, they need to be.
Yeah, no problem. I mean, I personally don't have an issue with any of these individuals, but.
So I, I believe we're citing or we're seating the members that are listed. Uh, there is a vacancy and, and, um. I have an inquiry out to somebody who was, uh, out of town and wanted, basically got back, but. The people who are collected there bring a particular type of expertise as we've discussed a couple of times about where we wanna get to. Um, I think it's appropriate that I, as the CEO, uh, are, am seated on that. Um, Denise has municipal management experience in, in several municipalities. Bob Ryback is a, a large employer in town, also has an MBA, this is located in close proximity to the redevelopment authority parcel. Uh, Chris Mickey is an engineer. Mike Yost, uh, is a professional who works with the Capital Region Development Authority, specializes in economic development and redevelopment. Uh, and Erica Frank is a, uh. Uh, program manager for the Harvard Foundation for Public Giveance. He has a philanthropic perspective. I, I am still waiting on somebody with, um. Uh, commercial property experience, um. And I have a couple of names for that, but, but it'll offer out. So we would be seating and forwarding to the town meeting, those names.
Okay. Um, and then, um, also, do we have like the timeframe of this? I know it says that, um, members shall be for five, in terms of five years. Do you, is there like a. A timeframe for how long we expect this process to take or is it kind of open ended or?
It is kind of open ended, but based on the conversation with the town attorney, it's expected to be somewhere between twelve and eighteen months.
Okay.
Uh, now that could change. It could go a little bit faster than that. It could go a little bit slower than that, but that was his. Uh, back of the, back of the napkin, guess as to how long it would take to effectuate the, uh, grants.
And, and as far as the agency may employ a secretary and other officers, et cetera. Will we be giving them a budget in the next budget cycle or then how will we be implementing the funds to?
We'll have to do three things. Um, they would have to have an added appropriation within the, the current year for that expenditure. Um, that's the operational. So if you think about like the, um. Inland wetland, inland wetland water course agency, they have their reporting secretary, maybe a little something else. Uh, but in terms of if they were to do, um. If they were to pay for a wetlands delineation, that, that money would have to come from someplace else. So we'll have to give them preliminary operating money. The town meeting will also have to appropriate them any professional consultation funds that are necessary. And the town attorney did give us an expectation as best as what that would be. Um, that would stay separate apart from the budget process and we'll go through the, the C N R process really. Um, and then, um, in the next budget cycle, we could appropriate, um. Reporting secretary funds in the normal course. Does that answer your question?
It does, yes, thank you. Yep, I'm good now, thank you.
Anybody else?
Um, and then Saul's listed in section five about them adopting bylaws, rules and procedures. Those are gonna come before us, before adopted.
No. Okay, um, so, and it's really not, uh, by law, it's really the rules and procedures. Um, and I think it also states that it will operate by, uh, Robert's rules and it caps what, it, it requires a certain. Certain number present per forum. They have to act within the confines of the forum in order to do business. Seven. Uh, six are listed with one vacant.
Yeah, vacant is why I was counting because it also says. They need a majority vote of seven.
Correct, I've got, uh, the one spot that's currently emptied that, um, I'm waiting to hear about.
Wouldn't a quorum for them be five?
No, half plus one. Three and a half, next, next holdover. Anybody else? Okay, um, so can I have, uh, without objection, I have a motion to approve the draft resolution as amended. And forward to a town meeting.
Second.
Further discussion on the motion. If I want her, okay.
I, I just wanna comment that I'm glad we're moving, moving forward. I I just wanna comment that I'm glad we're moving of moving forward in that process.
Me too. All in favor?
I.
I.
All opposed. Okay. So we will take care of that.
And this will go with town meeting and the next person.
Probably yes. Um I I he told me he'd be back at the beginning, beginning of the week um. So. And one thing we're off at now, one thing I just wanna reiterate, it's the the statutory process is very legislative body driven, so it's very town leading driven. The approval of and the establishment of the authority, approval and the delegation of the funding, um the the actions that are taken by the commission and and final. It's a very inclusive. Liberty based process, but I think it's important that it started out. Okay, um. Nine A review the draft police commission ordinance, so I think you guys all have that, but I'll share this with you. So as as you know, the circumstances the last couple of months have been a little stressful between the uh police commission and the board of selectmen. The legal opinion that we got from special counsel, special counsel Denine pointed out some inconsistencies between the statutes. The charter and the ordinance that established the commission, so the draft is intended to address those uh inconsistencies and make them consistent. Um so I think you've all had a chance to um. Read the draft, um any questions or comments on it? Any edits?
Don't have any edits, but I will just say that, you know, to me, this seems like uh we've been presented with a situation much like. The warehouse point. Versus Broadbrook fire tax thing where it was an issue, you know, that. Kind of unforeseen came up and was bothering the town for a while, it came ahead, you fixed it, I feel like this is the same kind of thing, it's now showing up, I mean, I think it's imperative. And our responsibility at this point in time to fix it.
Thank you, sir. Other que- other question, comments? Seeing none? Can I have a motion?
New motion, so would we be, we're motion to just forward this to town meeting?
To to approve the ordinance and forward it to town meeting.
Okay, yeah, so I'll make a motion that we approve uh the amending and superseding of ordinance number seventy one dash one and send it to a town meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded, any further discussion?
Just kinda wanna piggyback on Alan's comments, um I think that our, this is the right move, um I think that we're reacting to something. And um that's what we're elected to do is if there's a a problem to work towards fixing it, so I think that. I'm happy to be on board with this.
So I would just point out of the seven bullet points that are listed. Only five of them maintain the status quo in a clear fashion. Um two of them made corrections to the process to make it consistent with the terms of the charter, um one is the um. Uh appointment and employment agreements with the uh non bargaining unit police department employees. Um and the second one clarifies the role of the board of finance in terms of the budget um transfers across. Um so other than that, this is a codification of. Uh the things that are currently in practice uh in conformity with the provisions of the charter.
Yeah, and if you look at the current charter. I mean, the the current ordinance for the seventy nine S one, I think it's actually one line, it really couldn't be more broad, it's asking for trouble, no.
Any further comments or discussion?
I just think I I think you did a good job definitely on putting it together because it's necessary on.
All in favor?
I.
I opposed. Okay. Um. I would like to table agenda item nine B.
Table agenda, item nine B, Scott Collins nondisclosure agreement. Go to one.
Table, we'll take it up after that concession.
Okay.
I'll set, I'll second that.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Opposed? Tax refunds, there are two, it's not an amendment to them, they're two separate ones, so um they both need to be approved.
Maybe approved together or no?
Um.
Or do you want them separate?
Either way.
Okay.
Long as the bottom was right.
Okay, I'll move to approve the tax refunds totaling four thousand seventy four dollars and thirty two cents.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I like them.
Opposed? Let me report this. Um over the last few weeks, I've attended regularly scheduled coffee hours at both the senior center and Park Hill. In both cases, seniors in our community asked some really great questions and joined in a robust conversation about things happening in our town. Um conversations from uh the proposed community center projects to uh the wiring of broadband that I'll talk about in a minute uh to. Uh legalize marijuana and like everything in between, it was it been a really. Um really good set of conversations. Um I try and meet at least once per month, senior center typically on the first Wednesday of the month, twelve thirty. Um if anyone would like, if anyone would like to join and typically the format that I use is just ask me anything you want, let's talk about it. Um at our last selectmen's meeting, I presented another opportunity for the town to partner with graduate students in Westfield State University's M P A program. This semester, I'll be working with students studying organizational behavior to do an assessment of two particular strengths in our town government. Economic development activities and public communication. And explore ways to add synergies to and between those two topics. That project will be ongoing through the first week of December and will culminate with a presentation to this board at that time. According to state statute, municipalities in Connecticut are required to do a property revaluation once every five years. That process is currently underway. Based on towns around us, we should expect to see a pretty considerable increase in property values here in our town. Higher property values would mean that our mill rate would be lowered commensurate. Higher values may also mean that individual increases uh would occur in property taxes. While we do not yet have the results of the rebound, I wanna be upfront with taxpayers in East Windsor that they absolutely have the right to appeal. Any valuation that they feel is incorrect. Please pay attention to the town website and the board of assessment appeals meetings to ensure that you are aware of your ability to appeal and what those deadlines are. Um I'll share more on the timing of things as information becomes available, um we likely won't have the results of the rebound until sometime around Thanksgiving. But it is expected to be up because of the market. Uh last week, the town supported an S R grant application submitted by the board of education that would establish an all ages summer theater program. I was pleased pleased to submit a letter of support and the town would be delighted to host the program as an added enhancement to the improvements that have been made at East Windsor Park. Particularly with utilization of the ban shell for youth theater activities. I wanna thank the board of education and Dr. Tugren for the vigorous pursuit of the grant funding. And while speaking about the board of education, I wanna give them credit for some of the academic additions that they implemented in the school this past school or this current school year. Um Dr. Tugren shared with me talented and gifted program is back, the Broadbrook Elementary School is offering literacy workshops. And what I think is a very cool addition, the high school is now offering as a foreign language, American sign language. Um as the parent of two future students in our school district, I really am encouraged to see things that are starting to happen in our school system. Last Thursday, the boards of selectmen and education held a Freedom of Information Act training session presented by attorney Mark Samaruga. Who is in the process of writing his sixth book on the topic. The law has changed a little bit to accommodate for the advent of things like hybrid meetings. Uh again, thanks to the board of education for suggesting the joint topic, which was attended by uh board and commission members, town staff and members of the public. I'm sure many people have seen road crews working around town lately, stringing wires from telephone poles. This project is being run by Frontier, which will expand extend uh high speed broadband access all over East Windsor. This will tremendously help anyone who's working from home who needs to participate in virtual meetings. Or or as we continue to integrate the what's called the Internet of Things into our daily life, that's uh. Internet based refrigerators and coffee makers and thermostats and ring cameras and all that, that's the Internet of Things.
Aren't you proud of me? Class or something.
Yeah, right, uh the the work on that project should be completed in late October or early November with access to the new service likely available by the end of the year. Uh yesterday, I attended the groundbreaking ceremony for the new Windsor Locks train station projects. Once completed, the enhanced commuter rail line is expected to have a ten to one return on investment. In terms of regional economic enhancements according to the capital region council of governments, what that means is. For every dollar that they're spending on that uh commuter train line, it's expected to have a ten dollar return. That is in in terms of economic development, a home run. And it will benefit um particularly the warehouse point section of East Windsor because of the the walkability and the bikeability. Between that section of town and train station, so there will be a ripple effect that we should hope to see.
Um. More sidewalks there.
That that's happening, I signed a contract yesterday.
Nice.
Um start. Earlier this year, the state created the Community Improvement Fund. Um designed to make meaningful transformative improvements in quality uh qualifying communities like East Windsor. They will be awarding eight hundred and seventy five million dollars over the next five years with two application periods per year. For the first round, which was due in July, the town applied for a three point eight billion uh dollar grant to cover the outstanding project cost for the community center project. While we don't know yet if we have uh been awarded tho- those funds, although we should get a hint of that towards the end of the month. Um we're already starting to formulate ideas for our next application. Uh planning staff and I met with Linda Collins from East Windsor Housing Authority today to discuss the potential to run city water into the Park Hill complex. And that idea may be expanded to include the School Hill Water Association depending on awards from other funding sources. If there are other community improvement ideas that anyone has, please feel free to to share them with me so that we can workshop those. Well before the application period opens, um that I think really made um our application first round as strong as I believe it to have been. Because we had the opportunity to workshop early, so if you have ideas about community improvement projects. Uh that are gonna be transformative and infrastructure based, um please, please do share those. Town is getting ready for this year's energy season, um anyone interested can contact social services to schedule an appointment. This is for uh low income households uh that are trying to heat their homes in cold weather months. They have changed the guidelines of this program. And they've reduced the funding source available for this program, so so there's less money and there's no asset tests. Uh so what that will mean is that. There will not be enough money in this program likely to cover the demand that will be created. So we're trying to get people the information to apply as early as possible so that we can at least capture the the opportunity while we have it. Uh but this will also present a community based problem that we're gonna have to address in January, February when it's cold. Um so just putting that out out of people's radars. There will be an elder law event at the Arlington Senior Center on Monday the nineteenth from five to six, the discussion will include emergent legal areas of concern for the elderly. And feature presentations from Attorney General William Tong, Representative Foster and others. East Windsor residents are welcome to attend, there are a number of scams that are going on right now that that uh pay particularly on the elderly, so um. It's a good opportunity to learn about that. This weekend is the Four Town Fair. Um there's lots of fun family stuff to do there. On October first is what I consider to be one of my favorite events in East Windsor every year, which is the Walk for Abbey. Um that will be on October first at the park, sign up is at eight thirty and kickoff is at ten o'clock and it's a just a great day. To see the the community come together and support a good cause, I'm I'm really proud of East Windsor on on every day, but that day in particular. We're doing a haunted highway on October twenty seventh, this is the third year of this. That's fun every year, it's a great way for people to kind of raise the bar against each other and and provide a fun and um. Interesting event for about two hundred and fifty kids in the community, um. One of the things we saw from the first year to the second year is everybody stepped their game up and and really tried to go the extra mile, I can tell you already. Town staff is doing that again, um and uh we're we're looking at our competitors pretty strongly like, you know, we're ready for, we're ready for our show. Um so it's a fun event and anybody who wants to participate, uh I I would encourage to do so. And finally, I just wanna remind people about the small business passport program town is running, they have twenty participating uh local businesses in the restaurant and retail space. That program runs through November twenty sixth, it's a way of encouraging buy local longer. Um I've seen some really good feedback on Facebook, thank you all for your your help in promoting that. Um and let's do what we can to make the program a success and support the small businesses that are participating in it. That's all I have. Great.
Uh can I make two comments?
Sure, absolutely.
Um residents are the people who came out to the community news that there that was put out by you. And which was giving you some of the fitness to deadline. I am in the drawing on December thirteen.
Yeah, that's the return date.
You just said it was twenty six.
Closing date. So so they uh the program, the sticker piece of it will stop on the twenty sixth, we then gave them until the fifth to return them to my office with the drawing on.
So that that's what people needed to do on that, because I was confusing my law. I'm just saying. Get it done by the twenty sixth.
Get it done by the twenty sixth, get it back here by the twenty fifth, that's that's an important feat to getting it back here.
And then on you're muted to all. The Four Town Fair, this for participating in that Saturday or not?
No, we I we didn't have a critical master, I I didn't hear back from you, I had around, that's a the plan, but I can't in the month.
Yeah, no problem, I just wanted to know.
I I sent them a letter or an email noting that we wouldn't be able to participate, but we look forward to it, I'm sure. Forgot.
Um. Only meeting I had since I saw the last meeting here, uh with last night's meeting with police commission and I think so there was need to do a report because everybody was gracious enough to attend that. Um so I want to thank you guys for that, so um if anybody in the public is interested, you can wait for the minutes to come up on. Uh line and they'll be able to redo that. Well, yeah.
Sir.
Okay. On September sixth, the Economic Development Commission met, the commission is still looking for additional members. There is space for one regular member and two alternates. Town planner Ruth Van Calibreeze went over a change in zoning regulations for the tenants on Route one forty in the B three zone. The requirement for a small uh special use permit for a change of use for tenants in an existing plaza. Will now just require an administrative zoning permit. This change will promote business growth and ease the burden on new business owners. The Veterans Commission meeting uh was scheduled for tonight, they had canceled their meeting last Thursday, so unfortunately I could not attend this evening. On September twelfth, I attended the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. The commission approved a memorial bench and tree policy, which will now be forwarded onto this board for final approval. Park Director Melissa Maltese gave a summer and fall program update. Uh one hundred and one different campers registered for summer camp throughout the summer. Sixty five were residents and thirty six were non residents. There was an average of forty nine campers per week and we had fifty one returning campers and fifty new campers. There were forty eight total different swimmers that participated in the four offered swimming lessons sessions. And a thorough seasonal report with revenues and stuff will be um given at the next meeting. R F Qs will be going out this week for the design of the lights at the Abbey Road soccer field. And all the all inclusive playground at East Windsor Park. These were the two projects that were approved by the state bond commission and this is the current stage um of the process. The removal of the fence and lights at the softball field is beginning in the near future at East Windsor Park. This is due to the decline in interest of people playing that sport. Uh Mrs. Maltese also had a hand in helping prepare the S R grant. For the drama program that uh for selectmen already discussed. Um and also a follow up on some of the issues at Prospect Hill Park that were brought up by Chairman Semansky at the previous meeting. Mrs. Maltese noted that those have been addressed, the trees were trimmed by the basketball hoop and a company did come out to give a quote on the court repair. It's also time to get creative for this year's scarecrow contest. This year's uh theme is people's choice. Please call eight six zero six two seven six 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 two to register your scarecrow if you wish to participate. Um and they will be need to be set up in front of town hall between October fifteenth and eighteen. On September thirteenth, I attended the Arts and Culture Committee meeting. The board was joined by new member Sharon Apria. The community art project that was created at National Night Out will be displayed in the lobby at the East Windsor Police Department. The committee is excited to be working with the school system on the following projects, the high school, there's a pallet graduation product project. And a fabric weave that will go on the tennis court fence. Um also at Broadbrook Elementary School, a fourth grade river rock project as a landscape in front of the gym. And a one book, one school mural. Uh there will be a media day for the trolley museum mural on Saturday, October fifteenth at ten A M. The public is encouraged to attend. And Chairman Debbie Williams will be submitting an application on behalf of the committee for the Greater Together Community Grant, which was due today. Um I attended the planning and zoning meeting, which I'm sure Selectman Baker will discuss, and the police commission meeting. Last night, and that's all.
Thank you, Charlie.
Okay, um well, it's been a lot of meetings in the last two weeks, but um only two I need to report on, uh one being P T O last week, um. Um, PTO is in desperate need for members, especially people who are willing to step up and become officers. There's a lot of, the officers currently are looking to step away because their kids are moving on into high school age. So they're in desperate need for new recruits in that area on the the, what's the word I'm looking for? Not requirement, but the
Criteria?
Not criteria, prerequisite? Huh? Not prerequisite? I mean, it's not a prerequisite, but the level of commitment is, I guess what I'm trying to say is very low. It's, you know, you know, you don't have to do, you know, a lot. It's just, they just need bodies to help out here and there, and every little bit of help is, is appreciated with that. The other meeting I attend was this past Monday, Warehouse Point Fire. A lot of inspections have been completed by fire marshal and over the course of the past month, both on the Warehouse Point and Broadbrook side of town. And the other subject of note discussed at that meeting was the lack of firefighters on the Warehouse Point side. They are in desperate need of firefighters, of aid staff. They're having trouble covering, filling shifts with aid staff and the number of volunteers that they currently have is declined significantly and they are having trouble getting enough firefighters to respond to calls. So they are looking to maybe increase the number of paid shifts on that side of town to help cover. And the only thing I have is, coming up soon at the Troy Museum, they will soon be starting Pumpkin Patch and Rails to the Dark Side. So put the lows. And that's it?
Thanks, man. Alan?
Okay, Wetlands was canceled this month, no applications, which is kind of interesting. Plenty in zoning, actually Monday, this Broadbrook Fire Department, Fire Commission, they had six to five calls in August. They are actually, chief reported they are participating in a four-town volunteer recruitment drive. It's going to be held in Arlington. And I forget the date I had in my notebook and I don't have it. And I, but you could look it up in a minute or, or ask them or ask me. I have it in my notebook. But that's at the end of this month or the beginning of October. They're going to be doing, Broadbrook is going to be doing a vehicle extrication, but each town, I think it's like South Windsor and maybe Vernon, but I can't remember the fourth town. Each town's going to do something. You know, to kind of showcase what it takes to be a firefighter. So that's their, their answer to their low membership. They did actually, I, I saw added two members this month, so that was pretty good. I don't know if they lost any. They presented, the chief presented the budget. They're on track. And the truck report is that it is on track as well. The company is waiting on some stuff, but it's ordered. Everything and so far, everything's on track to get that on time as expected. Tuesday night went planning and zoning. There was a lot of people there for one fifteen Scenic World, which is the historical society. It's an application. It's a public hearing for it to put a wedding venue in there. And so a lot of people showed up to that, but apparently they, they just continued it. They can sit till again October. Because the neighborhood residence lawyer couldn't show up, so they want to make sure everybody was there to, you know, address all the concerns. So I will keep flagging that for you because I'm sure that will have some interest in that neighborhood. Two, two ninety-seven North Road. Obviously known as the Kemba property here, the special use permit for soil management was also postponed due to the information that was brought up the week before. So that will be ongoing. What else have they have going on? That's pretty much it, except for the zoning enforcement officer report as Sarah was waving around earlier. They talked about all the things that are on that and all four of us, everybody with Jason was there and they all looked at us wondering when the blight ordinance would be done.
My wife was home. I was home with Jason. And I know where the blight ordinance is.
And that's all I have.
All right. Well, thank you. Follow participation. The public's second opportunity to address members of the board. Let's start as always with those who are here in the room. If you'd like to speak, we give your name and address. If not, I'll turn to anybody who's online who would like to address the board and ask them to do the same. Is there anybody here present? Mr. Anderson is waving us off, you know, in East. Thank you, sir. Is there anybody online who would like to address the members of the board of selectmen? Please identify yourself by your name and address and state your business.
Hi, Jason. Norian Farmer, two forty-seven Southwater Street. I want to talk about this. I understand the blight ordinance. I, I, I get where we're trying to get to. I, I have one down the street from me that I've been trying to get rid of for six years now. But the grass issue, I think you gotta kind of look at that. I, as well, somewhat in line with what Alan was talking about, was looking at parts of my lawn saying, we don't go there. We, we don't walk on it. We don't anything on it. And a lot of our environmental issues that you don't even think about are, are somewhat caused by simple things like, like cutting grass too often. You know, years ago, when I was a youth, you could find a praying mantis and a grasshopper and a butterfly anywhere you turned. But grass is a necessary thing for those. Clover is a very important thing for honeybees and many other insects, which seems minor in the scheme of somebody's property value going down. But in the climate in which we're living, it's not. So I just hope that you tread lightly in that, that grassy segment of that blight ordinance. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you for that feedback. I appreciate it.
I, I especially appreciate.
Don't forget your homework. Is there anybody else who would like to address the members of the board of selectmen? Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else? Seeing none? We will have a brief executive session to include just the five of us. We will come out. There will be one vote. Sabo, you don't have to hang around if you don't want to get out and reporting. Can I have a motion to vote in executive session?
On the move, do we go into executive session at eight nineteen?
Is there a second?
Second.
Made in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're in executive session at eight nineteen PM. It is nine oh nine. We're out of executive session. We'll take up agenda item nine B, which discussed Collins nondisclosure agreement. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to authorize the first selectman to sign the nondisclosure agreement with Collins aerospace.
Is there a second?
Second.
Made in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So that carries unanimously. I do want to add one agenda item, which is nine D, which is approval of a supplemental check run for deposits into M and T Bank. Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we authorize the first selectman to sign a supplemental check run for anybody that had difficulties and didn't get their balance written out with M and T Bank.
Do we need to have a motion to add it to the agenda first?
We should.
And then do the vote.
So.
As added as item ninety, like to make a motion to add agenda item nine D check run for M and T Bank.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Baker?
Now, I can make, do I have to rescind the motion?
Yes.
Rescind my previous motion. Authorizing the first selectman to do a supplemental check run for M and T Bank. And you've got to rescind your second, right?
Sure.
Okay.
Selectman Baker?
Make a motion that we authorize the first selectman to sign a supplemental check run for M and T Bank for anyone, any employees that have accounts there that didn't get their pre-check transferred.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No further business come before the board of selectmen. Motion to adjourn would be in order.
I'll move that we adjourn at nine eleven PM.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Made in seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at nine eleven PM. Thank you, folks.